Okay, good, thank you. That's all I wanted to make sure.
Oh, wait, come here.
Mary?
Yes, sir. Yes.
If this ordinance with the change passes, you can, you know the name of that lady and her telephone number. You could probably give her a call and let her know then.
I will, Joe. Thank you.
Yeah, I've been updating her too. She's been emailing me and I just emailed her an update right now.
Oh, Brian, Mary, Brian just updated her email.
Wonderful.
We're going to begin in 10 seconds. Right to convene the city council meeting for November 2nd, 2020. Please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, may we have the roll, please?
Here.
Clistic.
Present.
Gustafson.
Here.
Kenny.
Here.
Shower.
Here.
Sullivan.
Here.
Vaughn.
Most resounding.
But he's here.
He's here.
Seven present.
We have a quorum that brings us to questions, comments, and announcements of a general nature. We do not have an audience tonight, so we'll move on to number six, which should be approval of the minutes October 19th, 2020. I'm looking for a motion to approve those minutes. Alderman Kenny, seconded by Alderman Shower. Any questions or comments? If none, the roll.
Kenny.
Aye.
Shower.
Aye.
Vaughn. Sullivan.
Aye.
Gustafson.
Aye.
Clistic.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
This is to receiving of communications. Do any of the aldermen have communication they'd like to share with the council? Alderman Kenny?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of communications here this evening. I have one from Stan Niemack regarding the corner at the Plainfield and Kass Avenue. He feels that the, the, the complex that's going up is ugly. And as I was told earlier this evening, that, that's in the eyes of the holder. I have an email from Janice Fisher. I think maybe, you know, some of you also have it regarding the accident that happened with a young man on the motorcycle at the Jewel Food Store at 73rd and Cass. That something needs to be done with that, that exit on the north end of the Jewel parking lots. I also have communication from Gretchen Athia talking about the construction traffic, the trucks and stuff going through Farmingdale, you know, that's going on with the 75th Street construction. That was sent over to the police department. And then we have Jennifer Santucci has an issue with unincorporated DuPage County up in Claremont feeding the animals. They're getting coyotes and skunks or whatever into Mrs. Santucci's property on Sunny First Street, which is in Darien. And there's not a lot that we can, we can do with either one of those, so. Thank you.
Anyone else have a communication regarding the building on Kass and Plainfield? So we'll have Mr. Sutton, we'll have Mr. Gomek address that if there is.
Sure. You know, and keep in mind that the building is not completed yet, so there's a lot more work to be done. Just to kind of give an overall summary, you know, I've heard of comments of why is the building oriented the way it's oriented? The building is ugly. You know, again, well, I think what we're all seeing is an unfinished picture. So first of all, in regards to the orientation of the building, the building was designed to have a maximal, or I should say an optimal, traffic flow for the Dunkin' Donuts, which is the drive-through. Dunkin' Donuts by itself would have not made it as well as a standalone building for the cost. The second part of that is the Padreino's Restaurant, which fortunately, we're lucky to have them still coming. The drive-through is on the Cass Avenue as well as the Plainfield side. Now, what a lot of you may have seen, including our residents, is the utility boxes, the large, ugly, silver utility pedestals that are part of any building. That's the only place that that could be placed. Keep in mind that we're going to be adding, the developer, I should say, now we, the developer, will be adding larger type of trees to camouflage some of those existing pedestals or utility boxes that are on the building. Those will be going adjacent to the Plainfield Road sidewalk. The existing wall on Plainfield and Cass, the landscape feature, that's also going to be raised approximately six to 12 inches higher on both sides. The reason for that is to make sure that the water feature that's going to be seen is visible enough and to make it aesthetically pleasing. If you notice, the sidewalks were just poured last week. The sidewalks were also with DuPage County coordinated to where the elevation wasn't as steep as it was prior to. The patio itself, which is on the Brookhaven side or on the, excuse me, on the west side of the building, a little more quieter to where patrons will have the opportunity to meet and dine out if we ever get back to a normal world, that is. So that's kind of it in the gist. I'm, hopefully I've addressed a lot of the uncertainties, but it's a long way. And the building itself is also going to have, before I forget, awnings on the Plainfield Road as well as the Cass Avenue side, you know, to, to spice it up a little bit, if you want to say, as well as additional lighting. So hopefully it answers a lot of the myths out there and/or disbeliefs.
Thank you, Dan. Anyone else have communications? Alderman Clistic.
Thank you, Mayor. I received three pieces of communication. Responded back with regards to Mr. Legansky from the 8,000 block of Farmingdale. Maria Chavez, which I believe you personally took a phone call to explain the situation with regards to not having a road blocked off. And then Mr. Kleifkin as well reached out to me. I think we all wanted to have a sort of more just spread out, but you know, due to the rising instances of COVID and positivity rate, you know, ultimately, I, I think we did the best decision not to, to do that. You know, a lot of people were upset about that. Wallerbrook actually went forward and had a event there. But I did receive some feedback that they were happy. A lot of people came out trick or treating. They were also actually distancing, distancing. People had some unique ways to deliver the candies, which I believe was safe and a good way to go, so. Yeah, we're disappointed we couldn't do the block party, but everyone understands why, so. Thanks.
Let me address that because I made a decision not to have the city provide barricades to barricade Farmingdale Drive. They wanted to hold a parade on the street with bicycles, and I said the city would not provide the barricades. What I did offer Mr. Legansky and Ms. Chavez was the idea of having people put their tables out on the driveways, having the children parade on the sidewalk, and then pick up their candy from the tables that were on, the tables that were on each individual driveway. They were disappointed with that. I realize it's not what they expected. But then again, I did not grant barricades to the Lions Club either for their event. So I, I was trying to be consistent, and at the same time, I had a concern about liability, and as I explained to Ms. Chavez on the phone, that is careful, as people are, things happen. And it wasn't a lack of mistrust I had on, pardon, any of the adults who would have run the event. It strictly dealt with the fact that things do happen. And I didn't want to create a situation where there was liability either for the homeowners who were running the event or for the city of Darien if they provided the barricades. They told me they were going to consider doing something, it seems from what you said, Alderman Clistic, because they did not do anything that day, because they told me they were considering doing something. So I don't know. But the city did not prohibit the actual event. The city basically said no barricades, and they made their decision based on that. So that's my response.
Yeah.
Okay. Anyone else have communications? I had communication I had Saturday night. I had a phone call from Lou Mallers, who is president of the Pinehurst Homestead Association. Lou received something like 20 to 30 phone calls from his residents regarding a party that existed on Lakeview near Pinehurst. He noted hundreds of people in the street. He noted that there was loud noise and rowdiness. And he said he was very concerned about it, and the residents were very concerned about it. And I guess we did have two police officers out there. And we did talk to those police officers, who basically told Mr. Mallers that there was nothing illegal going on. There was nothing more they could do except to monitor the situation. And I have not talked to the chief about it. I'm sure you're aware of it, right? But it's not, like I said, when Mr. Mallers called me, he said, what am I supposed to do about it? He said, he says, so I'm calling you. And I said, well, the Darien police are, are there. Short of going over there myself, he said, there wasn't a lot more I could do. And fortunately, it started to rain, and it dispersed. That it was a very uncomfortable situation for a lot of the residents in the Pinehurst area Saturday night. So I just wanted to bring that up as a communication I received Saturday night. Anyone else? All right. I have a mayor's report. I have some items I wanted to share with you. We have been informed, informed of the past, Joanne Dunello. Joanne was our 2005 Darien Citizen of the Year. She recently passed away and services were held. Joanne worked tirelessly on behalf of our military men and women in Afghanistan by collecting and sending packages containing food items as well as personal necessities. Joanne and her husband, Dr. Dunello, were longtime members of our EAP's parish, and Joanne will be missed. We received notification last Monday, DuPage County was considering adding $2.5 million to their DuPage Small Business Grant Relief Program. These grants were designated for businesses with revenues of less than $4 million. They were earmarked to assist in operational and payroll issues experienced by the recent shutdown on indoor dining. On Tuesday, October 27th, we were informed that the program was approved that morning by the DuPage County Council, and the grant application portal would be open at 1:30 PM. In a proactive move, I sent an email with the application qualifications and process to most businesses that might qualify. Last Thursday, in a Zoom conference meeting with 30 DuPage mires and managers in DuPage County, Jim Conan, we learned that the application portal was open for one hour and closed to 2:30 PM due to 289 applications, totaling $4 million coming in during that one hour. Chairman Conan indicated that because of the need expressed by these many applicants, he may go back to the DuPage County Board and request for additional funding. These new restrictions have come about with the increase in our daily COVID positivity rate. The average between 9.2 and today reached 10.6 on a seven-day rolling average. About six weeks ago, we were seeing 88 cases per 100,000, whereas today we saw 256 cases per 100,000. The DuPage County Health Department also reports an increase in our hospitalizations, increases in ICU enrollments, and patients placed on ventilators. These restrictions will continue until we can realize we reduce the positivity rate to 6.5 or lower over a three-day consecutive period. Transmission of the COVID-19 virus continues anywhere. So it was critical that we continue to follow the advice of the scientists. We continue to urge our use of masks and social distancing when we are out in public or entertaining at our homes. I cannot stress the importance of how our personal behavior affects the lives of others. And I ask that you consider that factor when you interact with others. Now, some of you know, the city recently issued a rebate of $108,000 to those restaurants and bars that made extra efforts to remain, maintain outdoor dining using tents and heaters. Now that our restaurants are limited to outdoor dining, we believe more firmly that our decision was a proper expenditure. I just want everyone to know that the city of Darien will continue to keep in communication with our local businesses, especially our restaurants and bars regarding their business status. And we will work to find ways to assist them where possible. That's my mayor's report for tonight. City clerk's report, Joanne.
I have a note to residents. If you haven't mailed in your ballot or participated in early voting, please visit your polling place tomorrow, Tuesday, November 3rd. Polls are open from 6:00 AM till 7:00 PM.
Thank you, Joanne. City administrator's report, Mr. Bailey. Department had information and questions. Any questions for Chief Thomas or for Mr. Gomek? If none, we move to the treasurer's report. And Michael, we have warrant number 202113.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, this evening I'm requesting council's approval of warrant number 202113 in the amount of $371,532.71 from the listed funds, as well as payroll for the period ended October 22nd in the amount of $258,448.29 for a total be approved of $629,981.
Motion to approve. All the women Sullivan, seconded by Alderman Kenny. Any questions or comments? If none, the roll.
Sullivan.
Unit.
Aye. Kenny.
Aye.
Gustafson. Clistic.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Shower.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Presser's report, the warrant's been approved. Standing committee reports, do any of the aldermen have committee information they'd like to share? Mary?
The city admin finance committee met tonight prior to the council meeting, and our next meeting is scheduled for December 7th at 6:00 PM. And I won't, don't know the status if it'll be on Zoom or if it'll be in person at City Hall.
Anyone else?
Yeah, the municipal services meeting is currently scheduled for November 23 at 7:00 PM. And again, at this point, it's to be determined whether it'll be on council chambers or via Zoom.
Do you have anything for police committee?
Well, it looks like Mr. Gomek wanted to say something about that.
Well, I'm going to clarify everything. I indicated it to Ms. Gonzalez today.
Then I got a question. Then I got.
All of our committee meetings and commissions will be held via Zoom until further notice. So, Belzak, your meeting, Mary, and Zoney will all be, they will all be Zooming. I think that was what Mr. Gomek was going to say. If not, Dan, please correct me.
That is correct, or the alternative was to put an end to new business. And, and again, it's, Mayor Marquez, we can have a conversation on it tomorrow as well.
Okay. Alderman, Mr. Carr, excuse me.
No, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just wanted to inform the public that we'll have, be having our quarterly meeting this Thursday night, November 5th, at 7 o'clock for the Police Pension Fund Quarterly Review of the Investment Performance. That will also be held by Zoom, if the information is available.
Thank you. Anything else? Alderman Kenny?
Chief Thomas, do you anticipate us having any items for our meeting? Police committee meeting on the 16th of November?
I do not.
So unless something happens, we probably will not have a meeting, but should something come up, we're scheduled to have a police committee meeting November 16th at 6 o'clock across the street in the police training room, but right now it doesn't look like what's going to happen.
Thank you, Joe. It takes us to questions and comments, the gender related. Do you have any comments from our audience tonight? We do have a number of, 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 here tonight. Okay. Takes us to old business, there being consent. There's nothing on the consent agenda. We have two items to review business. We have a resolution authorizing, Mayor, execute a memorandum of agreement between the Metropolitan Alliance of Police, Darien Chapter 48, Unit B, sworn officers in the city of Darien, January 9th for January 9th, 21 through January 7th, 2022. Motion to approve. Alderman Belzak, seconded by Alderman Vaughn. Any questions or comments? If none, the roll.
Belzak.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Shower.
Aye.
Gustafson.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Kenny.
Aye.
Clistic.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Item B. Consideration of a motion to approve a resolution to approve an ordinance amending Title VII of the Darien City Code labeled Animals by adding a new subsection three to section 7.5. Motion to approve. Alderman Belzak, seconded by Alderman Vaughn. I'd like to add something. We had a significant amount of concern here after we put this together for those residents who already had chicken groups and already have perimeter fencing around their backyards. And the, the ordinance to, the amendment, ordinance amending Title VII is including UIF, which states as follows, a party who has had an operational and perimeter fencing or vegetation screening around the entire rear yard as of October 5th, 2020, is also eligible to seek relief from section 2F, which means we have a resident who has a chain link fence and it's four feet high. We're not asking them to replace that with a six-foot stockade fence. We're allowing them to ask for variation. We're allowing them to go through the variation process. We may state some conditions for them, like putting slats in that chain link fence or whatever. So we're, we're taking into consideration the fact that of the people who are raising chickens in the city of Darien, we have residents who already have perimeter fencing on their backyards, not looking for them to incur the extravagant, extravagant cost of all new fencing, taking down one fence, putting up another. So that's what we're voting on tonight. Now, we do have someone here in the audience tonight, and I don't know if she wants to address this. Does she choose to address us?
I'm sorry. I had talked to her a little bit about.
Okay, she's aware of the changes that we made. Any questions for the, from the aldermen? We have a motion and a second on the favor. Joanne, the roll, excuse me.
Belzak.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Kenny.
Aye.
Shower.
Aye.
Sullivan. Sullivan.
Aye.
Clistic.
Aye.
Gustafson.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Motion's been approved. It takes us to questions, comments, and announcements of the general nature. Anybody have any questions or comments they'd like to make? Either from the audience or from the aldermen. And then Alderman.
Thank you, Mayor. Two really quick comments. First off, thank you for, Brian, for sending an email out to Attorney Murphy. He clarified some items that I had questions on with regards to a variance such as this versus a variance with regards to properties. There are some legal things that I didn't quite understand to help clarify that. And secondly, as many of you know, over the last year, a year and a half, I've been trying to get some lighting put into the Mark Dela School. I'm happy to say that after working with the board, that finally got done. So we have four new lamp posts at Mark Dela School. They put in an, an area to where it won't blind any residents on Womack Avenue. It's all on the school property. So now as parents and teachers and administrators now go to work in the morning or come home in the evening, they're not worried about tripping, falling, especially if there's any ice or snow. So I just want to thank the board for doing that and, and working with me last year. So, thank you.
Yeah, at this time, I'd just like to give a shout out to the Darien Lions Club, which admittedly I am a member of, for pulling off a very successful trunk and treat this last Saturday, October 31st for Halloween. During these trying times, it's difficult to try to support the community in a way that everyone's used to, which would be having a, a party at the Sportsplex. This year, that was impossible based on the numbers of people that normally come to this event. But a trunk and treat was held at the Darien Swim and Recreation Club parking lot in which over 160 vehicles went through, and over 700 children were given the opportunity to obtain candy and toys through the help of the Darien Lions Club. So I think it was a very successful event, and I'm very proud of that.
Thank you, Tom. Anyone else? Mary?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm proudly wearing my Vote t-shirt tonight and my Vote sticker. And I guess I just want to personally say or convey that on the eve of our 2020 presidential election, I just hope our community and our nation will embrace our democratic process and accept the outcome of the election, whether we know tomorrow or days from now, that we can all accept it with civility, compassion, and a peaceful resolve to the decisions the voters of our country have made, and that we can, you know, stay peaceful. And God bless America is what I want to say.
Anyone else? If not, a motion to adjourn. Alderman Kenny, seconded by Alderman Vaughn. All in favor, say aye. Alderman Kenny, seconded by Alderman Vaughn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
He is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.